I say, "previous month."
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and hi. I feel like we're all alone here tonight, but we're starting early. Welcome to the city council meeting, six o'clock, Tuesday the 24th. I'd like to give notice that the present public have been duly notified. We're starting our council meeting early, but we'll be going into executive session here shortly. First, I'd like to stand for an invocation, pledge allegiance, and roll. Our head, so heavenly father, as we begin our work this new year, please hold this new council in your hands as we carry forward with the city's business. We thank you for giving us such a wonderful place to live, raise our families, and enjoy all that you have provided us. We thank you for our health, and we ask that you remember those not so fortunate. We thank you for our food, and ask you to remember those hungry. We thank you for our freedom and our safety. We ask that you remember those that serve to keep us free and safe. Orders in your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bree, please call the robe.
Councilmember Bergwirth.
Here.
Councilmember Vitale.
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Loftus.
Here.
Councilmember Stone. Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Newhart.
Here.
Mayor Cronin.
Present.
Congressman Tucker.
Here.
And attorney general.
Here.
Wonderful. Thanks for all for coming, and I know it's a short notice. We will be breaking here in just a short few minutes, and we have prepared some dinner, lunch, whatever you want to say. Everybody's going to get the same stuff, whatever it is, it'll be fine. But before we go any further, item two on our agenda has been introduced because we want to make sure everybody's aware of the municipal association, what they do for us here in South Carolina and for us, the city. So, Bill Taylor is our representative with the municipal association, who have asked to come forward. He's left packages in front of you, and I'm sure he'll tell us what's in the package.
Thank you, mayor.
There's no prize or anything.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, my name is Bill Taylor. I'm one of the two field service managers that worked for the municipal association of South Carolina. A couple of months ago, Linda thought that maybe it might be a good idea to come down and just introduce some of the newer council members, but also maybe remind some of the more older council members or veteran council members about some of the services that we do at the municipal association. Most of you are aware that we are a not-for-profit, nonpartisan organization that was formed some eighty years ago to help the 269 communities around the state better their opportunities for managing their local governments. We fulfill this mission through three divisions. There are shared knowledge division, shared solutions, and shared voices. I'm going to go through a couple of these right now, and then I'm going to talk about a little bit about the information that's in the packet. Our shared knowledge, we have affiliate organizations that are primarily staff-driven, staff-related, with the exception of the new association, which is the Association of South Carolina Mayors. But this, we provide staff training relative to these affiliate groups, which also include the municipal court administrators, the municipal technology association, municipal power systems, stormwater managers, business licensing officials, community development association, municipal attorneys, municipal finance officers, clerks and treasurers, human resources, and utility billing. We also, this division is also responsible for providing three comprehensive training institutes, including municipal clerks and treasurers institute, the local government information technology education and certification program, as well as the municipal elected officials institute of government, which I hope most of you are participating in, and if you're a newly elected council member, you will register for that. These are all important parts of our mission. Also, under this particular area, we have our annual meeting, annual conference in the summer this year. It will be at Hilton Head the last week in June. We have orientation training and certification, continuing education for our planning and zoning folks. Most of you are familiar with that. Main Street, South Carolina, our local government management training. If you look on our website, we have a lot of information that's available for anyone to go on our website, lots of resources, and just our basic research as well as our field service. We have two field service representatives. I represent six of the cog districts, 26 counties, and 150, used to be 154, but it's 153 now that the Supreme Court did away with James Island last year. Our shared solutions section or division of South, of our municipal association includes our collections programs. We, the municipal association, we collect the broker's tax collection, we have insurance tax collection, we have set off debt collection, which helps you collect debts that are owed you, and we have telecommunications tax collection program. We also work with VC3, which is a IT company. We have our own technology-enhanced city hall, offering technology services to increase your productivity and customer service. We also have disaster recovery. I'm sure y'all are participating in that. We work with not only VC3, but the state of North Carolina Municipal League there. We also have self-funded insurance programs. We stopped providing medical insurance programs last year, but now we still offer our South Carolina Municipal Insurance and Risk Financing Fund, which is what we call SMRF, and this is our property and liability coverage, tort liability in vehicles. Then we have our submit program, which is our municipal insurance trust, which is basically our workers' comp program. Our shared voices division is basically our legislative and our PR folks. You see this in our Uptown Magazine, daily municipal clips and news that we provide through email. We're also on Twitter and Facebook in order to meet that social media outreach. We have a cities mean business campaign where we're talking about the benefits of collaborating with your business officials and talking about what's important in your cities. Most of you, some of you have participated in some of our regional advocacy meetings. We held them all in last September. This is where we go to all 10 regions of South Carolina. We get information from you, local officials, about what it is legislatively could occur that might improve your operation, might improve things here in the Isle of Palms. This is as we build our legislative agenda for the upcoming legislative year. We also have our municipal achievement awards. This is going to be the 25th anniversary of this event. This is held, I think actually the deadline was yesterday for its emissions, and the winners will be, and entrants will be recognized during our annual meeting on that Saturday morning breakfast. The other part of this is really what we're involved in right now, is our legislative programs, because we are involved in day-to-day visits over to the State House, trying to stay on top of our state legislature. We also have members that go to the National League of Cities to deal with some of the federal issues. We have folks, two folks in the State House every day that it's open. We also have two folks back at the office, providing legislative tracking and reporting. Also, we have our hometown legislative day, which will be held on February the 15th in Columbia. Now, I've provided y'all with a little packet of information. I'll just briefly go over some of this. A lot of this is familiar to most of you, but on the left-hand side, there's a little map, which shows the field service managers in our territory. My territory is the area in blue representing 26 counties. Behind that, you'll see our hometown legislative day, which is on February the 15th, and I hope that some of you will sign up and attend that meeting. It's always a good way to kind of stay in touch with what's going on in the General Assembly as we talk about our legislative agenda and you meet your legislative delegation. We have, the orange sheet there is kind of a list of online resources that are available through our website. We feel like our website's very user-friendly, but if you feel differently as you go peruse it, please let somebody know. I know one thing that I believe the town attorney had recommended that we talk about, maybe or at least give you some information, is some of the statement of economic interests and reporting requirements that are due to the State Ethics Commission, and I've just given you a little blurb in there discussing what is required of you as an elected official, your filings that are now required, and over the last few years, they've made you transmit these electronically versus mailing these in, but it's a very simple process. But there are consequences if you fail to do this. There are penalties and fines, and we certainly urge you to follow the letter of the law.
Hundred dollars a day.
Hundred dollars a day, yes. The other portions there is the cities mean business, raising hometown voices to a new level of influence, which is kind of advocacy, talking about how you, on a local level, can advocate what you do locally and how you can improve your operations. And then media success. I think Linda's probably been one of the better city managers around the state to involve the media and keep them abreast of what's going on in her community. On the other side, we've got information about our legislative agenda. The short little card there is our legislative agenda, the four areas that we're pushing for this year. The enclave annexation, we have heard annexation, annexation since this organization was formed some eighty years ago, and it's very difficult to get annexation movement in South Carolina. Municipal capital project sales taxes, that is a key issue that we're promoting. Right now, the counties in South Carolina have an option, have an opportunity to vote on a capital project sales tax. They do not vote on it, or if they, if it fails, then the individual cities in that county really have no opportunity to do that. So we're just asking the General Assembly to give the local municipalities the same option that you offer the counties, because a lot of times, we in municipalities, we have a lot of issues that the people want some resolution to and would be willing to pay that extra penny. So we're promoting that to the General Assembly. The rehabilitation of abandoned and dilapidated buildings is what they call the RAD bill, and actually, it was introduced in both houses last week. This is basically giving municipalities an extra tool in the toolbox for dealing with dilapidated buildings or buildings that you are having issues with going through as you move toward the condemnation process. And then the local government fund, certainly, we have lost money over the last five years for the local government fund, and with new revenue that's coming into the state, we're asking that the General Assembly reinstate us to the level that's required by state law. Those are the key legislative issues that we're promoting, and certainly, as you deal with your legislative delegation, we urge you to call their attention to that. I mentioned a while ago, the municipal elected officials institute of government. This is a great training opportunity for newly elected and seasoned veterans, if you want to come by, if you haven't participated. This consists of five courses, two are held in Columbia prior to the hometown legislative day in February. The other three are held throughout the year at the local cog, and we certainly urge you to participate. The next card is basically a card showing our affiliate organizations, with the exception of the new South Carolina Mayors Association, and that will be coming up. Finally, just a copy of our latest Uptown Magazine, where we update y'all on our schedule or some of the key issues that are there. And basically, we want y'all to see us as your resource on issues relative to your local government, because we're working with, for you and with you as a local elected officials and local staff people. So anything that we can do, feel free to give us a call. Again, I'm your field service manager. I've been in local government in South Carolina for 35 years. The last, I've only been at the association for almost two years. Prior to that, I was a town administrator in Charole for 29 years and in Lancaster as an assistant for another couple. But we have a great team working for you, and I urge you to give us a call if you have any issues. And if there's any questions, I'm here at this time.
If you haven't had an opportunity, I think it's still available to register for the 15th, for the hometown legislation action day. I'm assuming everybody's on the mailing list, appropriate information. I looked at the two, Jimmy.
I'm signed up on the 14th already.
All right. Unfortunately, legislature, the House is not going to be in session that day, and you're going to have some.
The House is furloughed that week. The Senate will be in session. We typically have an opportunity to go down to the State House, where you can talk with your House members or senators. Our group is kind of regrouping, and we're trying to form a legislative panel discussion with some of the House members and senators that day in lieu of going to the State House. So we're going to try and balance out that program, but we certainly urge y'all to come, and I'm sure you'll get something beneficial out of it.
And the governor's speaking the first thing.
That's what we hear.
We have fingers crossed.
We will hold her out when she's not out there with Mr. Romney somewhere.
Other pressures to boot. Relative to the legislative agenda, you've seen in Bill's recap, that one that we're most interested in is the local government fund. The others are important for other municipals in the state, but our biggest issue is the local government fund. Frankly, we don't have any rehab or abandoned buildings.
Right. You're very fortunate.
And enclave annexation is an issue from unpleasant, of course, but we have sympathy for you, but that's about all we can reach for at this point. So, any other questions for Bill? Concerns, issues?
Certainly glad to be here, and call us anytime.
I know you're on the road all the time, but we'll find you if we need you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Next, I'd like to receive a motion to receive legal advice regarding potential claims related to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act and ethic clause, which pertains to conduct as council members, council and committee meetings.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none heard. All right. We're now in executive session. Thank you for coming. We need to close down the camera and invite everybody to leave.
Yeah.
You did it better than five minutes.
No one likes the front of the room. It's scary.
I know, I waited for my. I'd like to welcome in a city council meeting. First of all, we're just exiting an executive session. I'd like to go on record to say that we've had advice from council, we've made no decisions, and I'm moving forward with our yearly business. So, next on our agenda, if you've had an opportunity to read what's coming up, on our agenda, we have an item known as Presentation of Signal 30 Award. Most people don't know what Signal 30 Award is. It's a special recognition within the city of Isle of Palms. Signal 30 is a code for exceptional public service. We haven't given out many of these in the course of our history, and so it's really a pleasure tonight to call forward Bill Pennington, who has provided exceptional public service. I'm going to recognize him up here in the front. Bill, will you just come forward? We've met before, but you probably don't remember. Step over here. People don't know what Bill is being recognized for. And he's come here, oh, you've got to turn.
Yeah.
When are we going to broadcast this? And I'm not sure you get it.
It'll be on our website.
We have a recognition here, which I'll show everybody, hurry a moment, for everybody's benefit. On November 2nd, 2011, Bill was attending a tennis forum at Wild Dunes. He's all the way from Salem, South Carolina, so it's a long ride. If you don't know where Salem is, just go to Clemson, keep going. He had the distinguished service of providing CPR to an individual who fell into court, heart condition. Bill was immediately at service. We've got an AED manipulator available to us. He took charge, brought the man around, used the AED manipulator before we could get our first response to this. And we're talking a few minutes. In our public safety building, Station 2, it's only a few minutes away, for three or four minutes for them to respond, but in that three or four minutes, Bill idly saved an individual's life. He was full of cardiac arrest. And with that recognition, we're presenting Bill tonight our Signal 30 Award, which is, you know, we don't give over a minute. I'm going to show you what it is now. Bill is here, by the way. He's got his wife, Janice, here. You have Scott Ryan, he's the director of your EMS center, and then Scott Walker's here, chief of Rescue 22, very nice. It's a long ride for all of you.
You didn't even go to the front and come down.
You didn't?
It'd be nicer than to make me, than to do that.
Well, we have here a special plaque. Where are you going to hold it to? It's going to be yours here in about five seconds. The Isle of Palms Signal 30 Award presented January 24th, 2012. Bill Pennington for heroic acts of citizen service on November 2nd, 2011. So, I want to encourage you to continue the outstanding work that you've done.
You should all know that yesterday, I received an email from a gentleman that I did not know, and he said that he congratulated me for something that happened to me on Thursday in Lehigh County.
Did you win a match?
Yeah, I got a really nice award from Lehigh County. But he said, "I wish I could be there, but to let everybody know that I feel so well, I am on my way to Aspen-Cavallo for a ski and learn some..." But I said, "Please thank the guys from Isle of Palms." Jason, Jason.
They responded, and they looked at you and said, "Why do we have to do that?" Maybe that's not exactly, but I know that's what happened, and so I'm so pleased that you were here to provide the service necessary, and we hope you don't have to do it again, but.
I hope so, too.
If you do, you know, please come back and see us.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
I can tell you this, that tournament is coming back to Wild Dunes next year, and we're going to have our fire team on site, because that group was, well, in the course of four or five days, there were 1,100 people playing tennis there, and for the first two or three days, they're all 70 years of age or older. We figure probability, we might need personnel again.
Do you really have your fence?
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. We're going to return to our regular scheduled program. Sounds like a TV process. I'm at the point five on our agenda, which is reading of the journal on previous meetings you have in your package, your regular meeting minutes from November 15th, November 1st, and I should be December 1st, I believe, December 6th and January 3rd. So, may I have a motion to approve or amend?
No move.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? None heard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? None heard. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, we have the opportunity to consider the position of mayor pro tem, very learned position in the course of the year. Michael.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate council person, Bob Bergwirth.
Second. Motion seconded. Jimmy.
I'd like to nominate council member Ryan McCannan.
I'll second that.
Ryan, it's seconded. Okay, now, we have two folks, two motions, two names and nominations. All right. Two separate motions. How do I, I deal with the, deal with the first motion first?
Are they motions or nominations?
I guess they're not nominations. So, all right, so we need to take a vote. All in favor of Barb? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can we do a show of hands?
Show of hand.
Yeah.
Four. All in favor of Ryan McCannan? Please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Very good. All right, Ryan, welcome on board.
Thank you.
Next item, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens now that would like to address council? None heard. I hear noise, but I guess that's just the party going on outside. Let's move on to standing committees. I'd like to report on Ways and Means Committee. I'm going to serve as chair. Jimmy Ward is going to serve as vice chair. We had a presentation from the Water and Sewer Commission about their activities at Forest Trail. Their plans are to replace the treatment facility there. They're going to start the permitting process here shortly. The permitting process will take in the order of eight months. They are going to have to approach our Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception that has to do with specifics, having to do with a height over 30 feet. It will not exceed 40 feet, however, so we don't need the variance. They're approaching DHEC and OCRM in the next series of months. We have conceptual drawings in our hands. I'm not sure, are we going to put them on the website? Can we do that?
We'll try.
We'll try. I think it's useful to have it there, or if we can scan them in. Big paper, though. It's going to cost a little over $6 million, by their estimate, and take 18 months of construction to put it all together, and they expect to start construction in 2013. And while they have 10%, they expect to fund 10% of the construction costs out of funds on hand, and the rest they will raise through a revenue bond, and that revenue bond will eventually come to the city council for our action. The other point in response to questions, the Wild Dunes facility, the second facility on the island here, still has roughly a 12- to 15-year life left in it, based on the technical exports that were presented and present at the time. They do expect a rate increase when this is put in effect, and they expect roughly a 5% increase in the sum rates, and that would be in 2014. Obviously, more will be heard on that as they go through that process. And I think I said earlier that the permitting cycle will take eight to 10 months. We turn to the city's business and heard from our treasurer. We went through our financial statements. Our revenue is, we're at the low point of the year. We have received 23% of our budgeted revenue, even though we're 50% of the way through the year. We have not received significant funds from the property tax collection from the county yet, but that's anticipated. We are still, frankly, at the same point we were the prior year, so we're not in a deficit relative to income, relative to prior years. Relative to expenditures, our general fund expenditures, while we're 50% into the year, we're running at 43% of our budgeted amount, so that's always to the good. So, if we're going to keep that going, we'll set a performance as we had in prior years. Accommodations fees, year-to-date from municipal accommodations fees, there's 9% higher than FY11 in our hospitality tax. While it's down year-to-date over FY11, we have a couple of peers that have been delinquent and are getting caught up. So hopefully, that gets brought up to scratch where it was at least in the prior year. We also took into consideration the. We also took into consideration the extension of the audit engagement with Green Finney Horton for future years, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the extension of the audit engagement of Green Finney Horton through the year 2015.
So moved.
Motion and seconded. Okay, any further discussion on our audit engagement? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We proceeded on. Under new business, we talked about a report from the Real Property Committee and their deliberation on what to do with 1301 Palm Boulevard, as far as after we demolish the building, how to refix the site. And one action we took was to approve the movement of $5,500 from our tree fund to improve the landscape and the trees at 3101 Palm. So, I'll make that in the form of a motion again. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion on moving $5,500 from the tree fund? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We set a budget calendar, again, as we have in the past, for FY13. We're starting that process in the ensuing month, in the subsequent months, and we will be walking their way through, first, the capital budgets and our general fund budgets through committees as we go through the ensuing months, and hopefully, come April, we'll have a budget that we can feel good about and represent to the city. So, on that, we set an meeting date of February 21st, meet again at 5:45. Any questions for Ways and Means? None heard? Moving on. Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met Thursday, January 12th. I was elected chair, Councilmember Birdwolf was vice chair, and the mayor is our other committee member, in case you need to know who to call. And we just received a vice that if we get a call from you, we're going to refer you to the mayor, to the city administrator. Under old business, we discussed amenities offered at the Connectors Run. There's been a suggestion that a beer garden be offered, and this would be within a fenced area and all. We had quite a bit of discussion on that. We had a couple of the people from the race there. They had a little slower participation last year than normal, trying to see what other races have that might bring some more participants. That was one of the things discussed. In summarize, we said, you know, the beer garden's kind of been approved along the Long Boulevard, but that's based on the involvement of the island's businesses. We don't want to take anything away from the island businesses. We want to make sure they're involved. Under old business, we discussed the mutual aid agreements between Isle of Palms, Sullivan's Island, and Mount Pleasant. I believe Sterling, you have those executed. They've been signed and returned?
Let me give you an update on that.
Okay.
The Public Safety Committee approved those draft agreements, draft-written agreements, subject to the legal review and then the acceptance by the other two entities. The agreements went through legal review and were then subsequently sent to the other two police agencies, which would be Sullivan's Island and Mount Pleasant. And the reason this is necessary is due to recent Supreme Court decisions. Basically, what we're doing is setting out in writing that which we already do. We already mutually respond to one another, and we already had in place a written agreement for this with Charleston County. So, all we're doing is solidifying that with the other two neighboring communities. So, we would just need council to approve the Public Safety Committee's actions.
I would make that motion.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
The next item of business was discussion of changes to rental placards for 9/11 calls. As you know, these placards are required to be within a certain distance from the front door. What we have seen happening, and as you all know, we're going to a new countywide dispatch system. The address is on the placard, however, administratively, through the discussion with the police chief and building department, we have asked that the address be enlarged or put in a different color. They're working on that because it's critical right now, since going to a new dispatch system, that folks give a good, clear address. Something that's happening along with this, please give this consideration to your home and for any people responding to any type of emergency. If you don't have an address on your house or a mailbox, you need to have that. And the other thing is, if you're using your cellphone to make that 911 call, please include the address when you're making that call. It's going to make the response time a lot faster. We talked about modifications to the connectors. We're talking about perhaps bike lanes. We had a couple of different plans that were brought to the committee. Of utmost importance to the Public Safety Committee is keeping enough space in that middle lane for an emergency vehicle to be able to make the transit on that lane. So, we have asked the city administrator to look into some of the dimensions that were played with in these different options, and we'll be discussing that again. I'll get into highlights of the Fire Department and Police Department. This will be very brief. If you have any questions, we can make the reports available to you. Fire Department, first, in November, the department responded to several potentially serious fires. In each case, the incidents were quickly controlled by the resident or the crew. Personnel responded to 43 calls, 27 of which were EMS. The new radio tower on 41st Avenue was placed in service in November, and we've noticed an immediate, we did notice an immediate improvement in service. In December...
You still happy, Chief?
Okay. If Chief's happy, we should be happy. In December during the month, Fire Department personnel responded to 41 calls, 25 of which were EMS calls. Now, move on to the Police Department. Captain Caldwell made the report for the Police Department. In November, she reported an incident end of the month that led to locating a quality of handguns with live ammunition and other items of suspicion. The city notified alcohol, tobacco, and firearms to assist in determining the legality of the seized weapons. Coordination of efforts between the Isle of Palms Police Department, ATF Charleston, West Virginia State Patrol, ATF West Virginia, and present federal prosecutors resulted in the subject being extradited to West Virginia for federal prosecution. So, we don't get just the car break-ins and all here. We're subject to some potentially very dangerous things, like other things are. Continuing with the report, dispatchers answered 3,411 calls. In December, the dispatchers responded to 3,427 calls. Arrests were down a little last year. That kind of follows a national trend, but we're still subject to break-ins and all. Of course, with the economy, you know, keep your doors locked, keep your cars locked, just be safe. Our next meeting date will be 5 o'clock, Tuesday, January 7th.
February?
That would be, that would be February, yes.
Go back and talk.
See if they can rent.
I had it circled in red, and I still didn't catch it.
Question for Chairman Vitale. I noticed on the minutes from the January meeting, the meeting was held at 3:00 PM. And the meeting for next month is set at 5:00 PM. Considering that a majority of our city business really, and substantial, like 66% of our employee workforce, plus our budget, is tied into this committee, I think it's important that people that work on the Isle of Palms have access to the committee, and I feel that. For years and years, it's been a 5:30 minute, and I'd like to request the committee consider staying with that 5:30 schedule in order to accommodate residents who want to have input to the committee.
Thank you, I'll look into that.
Okay. Any other concerns for Public Safety? Nothing heard? Let's move on to Public Works. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee was held Wednesday, January 4th. All committee members were present. I was nominated as chair. Councilman Loftus was nominated as vice chair. We went into the department reports, directed with Director Pitts. For the month of November, the focus of the Public Works Department had been on completing the cleanup of the Beach Access Pass and the Bike Pass between Breach Inlet and 7th Avenue. In December, the concentration of working was on, was working with EDIS on the ditch cleanup at 34th Hartnett and at Forest Trail. The city has a five-year ditch maintenance contract with EDIS, and each of those years that we go through and identify different open ditches, they have vegetative areas that need to be cleaned out, and we attacked those. Moving on, under old business, we had update on drainage projects. Director Pitts reported that the work done on 21st Avenue was complete before the end of the year, and the staff has submitted paperwork to the county so that we can get reimbursed for that work. Moving on, we had other talks of ditch maintenance, but we had, based on, also under old business, we, based on feedback from other information that Councilman Loftus had received about the idea of bike lanes along Palm Boulevard. And I think committee and general kind of really would like to focus on that, so I think that's something that we'll continue to have on our, on our agenda and continue to work towards bike lanes along Palm Boulevard to get those bicyclists off the street. Continuing on the update of drainage project on the island, Director Pitts reported that Loudoun Street Drainage Project, which is funded by the transportation sales tax, has been completed, and the trail drive is about 90% complete. So, we're looking, curious to see how that's going to now work when we have a heavy rain.
We need a drain, right?
Right. We also talked about the areas from 53rd to 57th. The ministry continued that the money was in the FY12 budget from 46th to 52nd Avenue. And we explained that we're going to enter into a sole-source contract with civil site engineering environment because of their strong knowledge of the infrastructure within Wild Dunes, and they've worked well with us in the past. So, she's going to go ahead and work on, start working on that. The, moving on to new business, we had discussion of some paving problem, or paving suggestions near the compactor in the municipal lot. One of the businesses had trouble hauling their waste to the compactor, and we requested the city help them in that endeavor to make it easier. In return, it would cost the city nearly $6,000. So, we're trying to work with them and the other businesses, see how they basically use that compactor, how they're able to manage. And we have, we're still having it on our radar, but all the committee members wanted to get down and take a look at what was going on there. And I had that prepared. Down there, it is a lot of loose ground. So, we'll continue to work with that.
What weight, what kind of weight are they moving?
Hundreds of pounds. The thing is, with them, it's, with this particular business, they have a lot of wet garbage, as opposed to some of the other businesses in there. So, when they're hauling their material, it's hundreds of pounds on a roller system as compared to somebody who's taking down a garbage bag at a time. So, that's where we're having a lot of issues.
Okay. We'll stay tuned.
Correct. So, we're going to try to work with them on that. We had, we had discussion of recycle bins. Some of the recycling bins are being left out by the road. We want to make sure that people, you know, want to, when recycling, tomorrow is recycling day, so at the end of the recycling day, be sure to bring your waste back, or your recycling back.
Not your waste.
Not your waste. Bring your recycling back, or your recycling containers back from the road, so they're not blown out into the street. Not take them out there too early, because debris can, I mean, the wind can blow the material around as well. We're going to keep that on the agenda, and hopefully, that doesn't become a problem. We had no contracts in excess of $10,000 under miscellaneous business. But a couple of the things that we wanted to talk about, one of the trees that we have down at the Recreation Center is maybe hampered by electric wire, which has been repaired, thank you. And then, that was one of the things that Councilman Loftus brought up, and it's been a concern of a number of residents, and we'll let them know that's been taken care of.
Looks good, Donnie.
Moving on, there's not a whole heck of a lot of stuff going on, except Donnie's keeping busy. And it's been interesting. All the members on Public Works this year, all new members to Public Works. So, we're all learning.
He's going to train you, is that right?
Yes. So, it'll be, it's, it has been good, it's been interesting. So, our next meeting is scheduled for February the 9th, and it is at 4:00 PM. And as before, Michael, I'll take that into consideration, you know, for moving it back to a time where most people can get to.
We were busy cleaning up in the down period, the Beach Access Pass, etc.
Correct. Yep, and that's what I said, that's what they were doing, maintaining the Beach Access Pass in our down period, and, and we cleaned up, like I said, we cleaned up the Bike Path from all the way up to Breach Inlet, from a citizen's request, which would normally have been a, you know, state endeavor, but it's like pulling teeth.
Good luck there.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just something that sort of crosses over Public Safety and Public Works is the signs on the beach paths towards the beach, the number signs. We need to reassess those and make sure they're all visible. The one that's, we talked about it in the meeting, but you didn't mention it. If you notice, if the public notices a Beach Access sign that they can't see from the beach, it's very important. If someone's lost on the beach, if someone is drowning, if someone has a heart attack, these people need to be able to turn around, see a sign, and tell the police or a fire, whoever, where they're at. Mine at 6th Avenue, another couple inches of sand, you won't see it at all. So, just something.
Okay. Got it?
Well, we did talk about it, and I suspect we'll do a survey, get the spring, make sure that they're all right. Just to emphasize what Marty said and Barb is emphasizing, knowing where you are on the island may be inherent to a resident, but we have so many visitors here that just know by reference where they are. They don't know the street address. And we are migrating to a central dispatch system where the dispatcher will be far away from here, and when somebody says, you know, "I'm on the beach and I have a person in distress and I'm in front of the wind jammer," they don't, I mean, they don't know where, the dispatch won't know where the wind jammer is. Now, we'll work on a system where that wind jammer can be keyed in and an address given, and so people can be dispatched properly. But there's so many other locations, whether it be on the beach, or on the roadways, or even in the properties, where we need to make sure people are aware of where they are by address that can be addressed by public responding personnel. We'll be talking about this for at least the next year, I suspect, so stay tuned. Thank you very much. Let's hear from the Recreation Committee.
The Recreation Committee met on Wednesday, January 11th. First order of business was to elect a chair. I will be the chair for the next year, and I look forward to serving with the Rec Committee. There's a new booklet available, which lists all the programs at the Rec Center this January through April. If you haven't seen it, please get ahold of one City Hall or at the Rec, because it has just a myriad of different kinds of activities that you and your children can take advantage of. As you know, the Rec has many activities over the holiday season. We had the Christmas tree lighting, Santa's cookie workshop. New this year was Letters to Santa. Santa managed to reply to 181 letters with the help of the Rec staff. Upcoming events, a big one, the Blues Bash, which will be held February 11th, 5:00 till 8:30. February 12th, 2:00 to 5:30, admission $5. And the Exchange Club, again, will sell refreshments. Another upcoming event is the Cupid's Card Shop, which will be held for children February 9th. They will be given materials to decorate Valentine's cards. As I said, we have so many programs, it would take all night to go through them, so we have a couple of new programs of note. There's a photography contest... There's a photography contest. Three entrants, different categories, lifestyle, natural IOP, and animals. All cities be, all photos become property of the city and will be used in different magazines. If you'll just email them to Carrie Farrell before March thirtieth, and we expect the mayor to be, Linda to be joining back.
Are you going to be entered?
No, I don't want to put myself on the line, that's just too much. Another crucial thing in my life, there's a table tennis league organizing. So, we'd like to get some people, registration is through February twenty-fourth, five dollars a person. After that, once it's all organized, it'll be Tuesdays in the morning, ten till noon, come out and play and have some fun with awards to the winners. Next meeting is February eighth, four o'clock, in the council chambers here.
Very nice. Any questions for the Rec Committee?
Mr. Mayor, do we have our inner council table tennis tournament?
We can organize it.
Just checking.
We can organize it. We could do it right here. You having your own paddle?
I do.
Okay, all right. You're on.
Me too.
All right, there's two. Well, we did volleyball a couple of years ago.
And the winners?
We did basketball before that.
And the winners were? The mayor?
Actually, it was the police department. And they're out there humping their chests, and yeah, we took them down, but I don't-
I'm not going to play them, they're too tough.
The good thing is, we didn't need CPR, but it was close. But Pat will tell us we might even stand a chance, who knows? All right, let's move on to Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Personnel Committee met Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand and twelve. Attending the council, council members Battelli, Stone, and Thomas, City Administrator Tucker, Assistant Administrator Zuman, and City Clerk Copeland were present. Past Chair Thomas called the meeting to order and acknowledged the press and public have been duly notified. Councilman Stone nominated Councilmember Thomas as chair and Councilmember Battelli as vice chair. Both were unanimously approved. The minutes of the last meeting were unanimously approved. Jim Covington's affiliation with the vacation rental industry was verified, and his appointment to the ATAX Committee was confirmed. There was some question as to whether that would make him valid for that committee. And it, his affiliation does do that. New business, Judge Harper tendered her resignation December twelfth. And I believe Judge Harper's been with us for about thirty years now, is that right, Linda?
It's a long time.
Wow, her services are certainly appreciated and, wow. Anyhow, two persons have expressed interest in serving her unexpired term. Michael Maloney is currently the livability court judge, and Dan Schlossyver, the current city prosecutor. Both are qualified to handle the position. If Judge Maloney were selected, the city would be asking that he handle both the municipal and the livability courts. After, then the committee went into private session, and at the end of that, we came out of executive session, and Councilmember Stone moved to recommend the city council the appointment of Michael Maloney as municipal judge, and Dan Schlossyver as assistant municipal judge. We passed that motion unanimously. At this point-
You're making that as a motion now?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Look at a second. Discussion, the motion, as you recall, Michael Maloney for municipal judge, and Dan as, Marty.
Just a question, have both been contacted and both are interested in?
I have not had any further contact with Michael Maloney, but he had, he had indicated to me already that he was willing to handle both courts if the city so desired. I have received a communication from Dan Schlossyver that unless the role of assistant municipal court judge were to be expanded beyond substituting when the judge was out for some reason, that he did not feel like he was interested in that position, would continue to be interested in the appointment for the municipal judge's position, but was not interested in the scope as it was outlined to him for the assistance position. So that basically means that at this stage of the game, what council would be considering is the appointment of a municipal judge, and the committee will need to deal with the issue of the assistant municipal judge at a subsequent meeting. And I just think I should point out, it's important for us to go ahead and appoint a municipal judge to serve out Judge Harper's remaining year's term, because of course, we've got the business of the court that needs to be attended to. So, so we need to get a municipal judge appointment taken care of.
Okay, make a motion for that then.
So-
Use amended.
You're amending the motion to only include the appointment of-
Michael Maloney as municipal judge. As municipal and livability.
Right. Amendment, a second. Any other discussion on the amendment?
When do we have a chance to nominate Dan Schlossyver as the judge?
We have to- We have to vote on the motion in front of us.
The amendment first, right?
We have to vote on the amendment.
And if that passes, there's no nominating, is that correct?
Correct.
I've got one question. As, does the, the term of, do they coincide, both terms, are they both two-year terms?
The judge's appointments are for two-year terms.
Correct.
In the case of this municipal judge appointment, this appointment is fulfilling the unexpired term of Judge Harper. So, that term would expire December thirty-first of this year. So, we're talking about basically a portion of a year for service for the municipal judge. The livability judge position, Michael Maloney, is in that now, and that term does not expire until the end of this year as well. So he's already in that position.
Correct, yep, so next January-
We visit this again.
Exactly. Exactly.
At that time.
Okay, any other discussion on this? The amendment?
Can you just restate that for me, it was kind of tore up.
The amendment?
Amendment is just to have Michael Maloney, approve Michael Maloney as municipal judge. And livability judge.
He's existing.
Only the one judge.
All right, okay. So that's the amendment. Any further discussion?
Mr., I will, I like Judge Maloney, and I think he served the city well. I like the idea of having two judges serve as city, one as who has criminal experience to serve in a municipal criminal law area. I like the appointment of Dan Schlossyver. He really would like to serve that, you know, he's served some, many, many years as a prosecutor on the island. And I think he would step well into that. It's not that I have anything against Judge Maloney, I think the idea of having two judges in the city would benefit the city, as we've had since the inception of our local government.
Okay, Michael?
You'll comment?
Sure.
I've had a chance to observe Judge Maloney in court on probably half dozen occasions, if not more, and, you know, and I don't know Dan, so I'll be very frank with that, but I've been impressed with the judge's benchside manner. I mean, he's been, he's done a great job representing the city, looking out for the interests of the residents, and particularly effective in some of his discussions with, say, underage drinking and trying to make a, you know, change, maybe change some people's lives. So, you know, I kind of look at, you know, past performance, and the job that he's done for the city is, I think he deserves this appointment.
Okay. Any other comments?
I was going to say, isn't Dan then still stays on as the prosecutor?
Prosecutor. He still is a prosecutor, but please, okay. Okay, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Two no. So the amendment carries. So, the primary motion, which is really mute, is appointing Michael and Dan, so that's going to be, that'll be defeated. Because we don't want, he doesn't want that position.
We still have to vote on it.
We have to vote on it. All in favor of the primary motion, which is appointing-
Can you restate, restate the primary motion?
Appointing Michael Maloney as municipal judge and Dan Schlossyver as assistant municipal judge. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
I think, I think, take the Dan off the-
Yeah, we amended the amendment.
No. So that's gone, all right, fine. So the primary motion is to appoint Michael Maloney as municipal judge. Thank you very much. All right, we'll vote again. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Still two no. All right.
All right. We're done?
That part's over. Do you have any more?
Next, we discussed recognizing Laura McLellan as Employee of the Month. After, as Councilman Peaney commented in the last meeting we had, that he frequently, that he frequently visited City Hall after hours and found Laura still working in a positive upbeat way. She is always eager to assist him in any way, and she seemed quite capable of multitasking. The committee unanimously passed a motion to recognize Laura as the Employee of the Month.
Very good.
Administrator Tucker informed the committee that the information she provides to City Council for her evaluation will be assembled and should be in the hands by the end of the month. Next meeting will be, we'll probably hear somebody say something about this one, but Thursday, February second, at nine A.M. in the conference room of City Hall. Now, we all agreed on that, and we usually don't have a whole crowd at our meetings, so, I don't know.
You have the safety sweepstakes, though?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I got that, I haven't got to that yet. Go on to that?
Yes.
All right, the safety sweepstakes winner, General Governor, is Emily. Police Department, Dawn Caldwell, Fire Department, Victor Lawrence, and Public Works, Joseph Ankrum.
Any questions for Personnel? None heard, let's move on to Real Property.
Thank you, Mayor. Real Property met on Friday, January sixth, at eight-thirty A.M. I was elected chair, and Councilman Stone was elected vice chair. And first of all, first order of business was discussing rents due for the city for city tenants. And we had one tenant that was behind in their payments to the city on their rent, and they had been caught up and were a hundred percent whole. Well, good job doing that. Under old business, we had discussed the beach restoration, and we have not, am I correct, we have not received from DEHAC that permit?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're still waiting on a permit for that? We're all ready to go and start moving-
Truth is, we have DEHAC permit, we don't have the Corps of Engineering.
Yes.
Okay. On the dredging, we have received a permit, and the bid process has started, so we anticipate being able to move quickly on the dredging. The dredging, the marina, should take approximately three or four weeks once it's mobilized.
We are, we've made a motion to award a contract.
We've awarded the contract.
Contract for the dredgings, done.
As far as- Next was a discussion about the building department, the parking lot, and what was done. It was already handled in ways and means as far as allocating funds for the beautification of that. The city is also looking at a consolidated budget for the grounds for City Hall and the parking lot. And we're really looking at that and studying those numbers, because it looks like we are going to be in an over-budget situation. So, the committee is reviewing that, and we're making recommendations to council on that, hopefully next meeting. Okay, miscellaneous business, we've discussed, also discussed as far as dumpster, which came under this committee as far as how to handle the dumpster for, as far as the front beach. Some of the, one, one business in particular was having a hard time with that. And it's a six thousand dollar cost, so we're really taking a look and studying that. And next meeting is set for February sixth at five-thirty P.M.
Just a reminder, the bid opening for the demolition of thirteen oh-one is Friday at ten. So keep your fingers crossed we get good numbers.
Okay, any questions for Real Property? We are beating on the core as much as we can. As you know, we got the core permit after we've awarded the dredging of the marina. I was Memphis talked also, so, I don't know what's going on in their world, but there you go. All right, also in your possession are the reports from standing boards and commissions. You have combinations tax committee, Sandy Prince is with us today, welcome. You have, there's no meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and you have the meeting of the planning commission. They're continuing on with their parking work products, and I expect to have some recommendations to us, I suspect, after their next meeting. So, we may have a joint-
I was going to say, is there a joint meeting?
We don't have anything scheduled yet, but that would be my, my thinking, is to have a joint meeting with the planning commission, where they can elaborate on why they think we ought to go in this path that we're going. But they need to finish their work product, so, before we step forward with them. So, any questions for those folks that we should pass back to them?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is there any way that we can have all the suggestions made by the public during those forums we had? Just so the island can see what the people of the island were wanting, suggesting?
Well, Douglas put a summary together.
The council would like copies of that.
You can make that clearly available, sure. So, okay, we have no other petitions, nothing else on the agenda under miscellaneous, as we've discussed earlier, January fifteenth. It's not on your calendar, it can be, it's municipal association. I can also report that the Exchange Club is having their oyster roast this Saturday, and we can have Sandy cook you up some oysters, is that about right?
I'll be there.
Yeah?
I'll be watching Sandy.
You and, yeah. The two of you cooking oysters, I'm not really, we're trying to get people to go, you know? All right, so, any other items to be brought before council? None heard, our next meeting is February twenty-eighth, not the last day of February, but, all right. Can I have a motion to a juror?
Come in.
Second. Second in, all in favor? All right, enjoy your evening.
Let's go.